Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 1st. A little bit after 6:30 PM, we have all members of council present. Before we start, I've been advised to say there has been a change in the agenda and both Items 11 and Items 13 are removed from this evening's agenda. That being said, if we can all stand, and Connor O'Malley is here. He is a Boy Scout from Troop 58. He's in attendance this evening, earning your citizenship and community. And his troop meets at St. Luke's Church right down the road here. Connor, let me stand, and then the floor is all yours, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Connor. Connor, I was asked to ask you, what grade are you in and what school do you go to?
I'm going to ninth, and I know it's Haggerty.
Haggerty, alright, go Huskies.
We like to embarrass all the, you know, Boy Scouts as they come through, so.
So does that mean you were coming out of Child's Middle? Or you're coming out of Jackson High?
I'm from St. Luke's Lutheran.
Oh, okay, coming out of St. Luke's Lutheran. Look at you. Alrighty. Well, good luck at Haggerty. It's a great school. Moving along, we have our invocation. Oh, waiting in the wings. Thank you, Chief. How are you this evening, Chief?
Good, very good, thank you. Counsel, just to give you a heads up, this Saturday, June 6th, it's a 13-year anniversary of the loss of Shane Kelly. So, as in keeping with our tradition, we'll lower our fire station flags for that day, but I just wanted to alert you to that event. If you care to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're reminded this Saturday of the tragic loss of one of our firefighters, and we pray for our workforce, and we pray for his family as well, and the difficult time it is every year this weekend rolls around. And we ask for protection for all of our public safety and all our city employees when they're out there engaged in activities throughout the city, keeping us in a safe place in all their assignments, all they do. Father God, we're honored tonight to have some veterans here that have been very active with our Veterans Tribute, and we just pray for these veterans and the entire American Legion folks, and for the VFW as well. And Lord, we ask blessings on them, good health, and keep them safe in all that they do. We lift this up in your name. Amen.
Chief, who was David, a doctor who also was rendering care?
Doctor Donald Diebel. Yeah, same thing, same accident. Thank you.
Thank you again, Chief. Moving into the first item of business, it is item number one, and it is a presentation with the American Legion, I believe. Let me just pull this up here. Presentation from the American Legion. So Counsel, if you can join me down front, and American Legion, why don't you come on up?
to be here tonight to make this presentation. The mayor and the city council, we want to thank you very much for taking on this project. It's been a long time coming, like you said, on Monday, and we had a committee appointed by the mayor, who we thank very much for being on it. We thank you, and a lot of the veterans that I spoke to on Monday, and a lot of the civilians that were there, all praised the Veterans Memorial. They couldn't have better things to say about it. We as veterans, and not only at the American Legion, but the VFW, and those who live in Seminole County, all praise the tenacity that the mayor and his council has in pushing this project. It's been a long time coming. You put the right man in charge, the leaders. When I say that, I mean, we had a committee, and I want to thank the people that were on the committee, all the construction people, electricians, Lars for being a leader. You're a pretty good First Sater, too, Lars, I gotta tell you. So, with that said, I'm gonna call up my Vice Commander, Peter Gregory, and he will present the mayor his certificate.
I would do that, Louis, but first, as your honor precedents, the federal trumps anything that happens here in the state or in the city.
I don't need the microphone for this. On behalf of Representative John Micah, in the post, we went up to John and we asked for a flag to be flown over the Capitol, that we then could present to the city. So John said yes to that, was very happy to do that. And Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this proclamation from John Micah and from the architect of the Capitol verifying that the flag that now flies over the Oviedo on the Park Memorial, Veterans Memorial, was flown on April 29th over the National Capitol. Please suggest that this be here in the building, so that people, when they come, can see the level of care, dedication, and devotion that you have towards the taxpayers and the citizens and especially the veterans. When the time and weather takes that flag from us, the post would like to then fly the next flag. By relieving you with that flag. I would think that you might be able to fly the flag. This, of course, is if you made Chinese. This American Legion presentation, by Title 243, represents all the veterans here in Florida. Certificate of appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to the city of Oviedo with the Oviedo Veterans Tribute. In recognition and sincere appreciation to the citizens of Oviedo for your recognition and tribute to the Oviedo Veteran Community. The veterans of Oviedo and Seminole County were honored by the recent opening of the Veterans Tribute and Memorial in Oviedo on the Park. This multi-year effort involving numerous stakeholders and tight fiscal constraints reflects outstanding patriotism and dedication to the memory of those citizens that have answered our nation's call to arms. Past Oviedo and Seminole County veterans from war and peace, as well as future veterans, are honored by your tribute. This is presented by our commander. Here's the page. 2003. (applause). It's a first demonstration of your belief in the democracy that you allow two Winter Springs people to be on the park.
We don't want to tell anybody that.
Right, Counsel?
I have. I have one more presentation to make, and this certificate is for our leader on the committee. He does a heck of a job. He held his meetings every month, and for two years, we sat there and listened, and he gave us, he gave us the right to give him advice. He's not only a good leader, but he's also a heck of a firefighter and First Sater. Saved my life on Saturday. Saturday? Yeah. Sunday. This is presented to, certificate of appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to Fire Chief Lars White, Project Manager of Oviedo Veterans Tribute. In recognition and sincere appreciation for your truly exceptional service to the Oviedo Veteran Community, your steadfast and loyal dedication, efforts, and vision created the Oviedo Veterans Tribute in the Oviedo on the Park. This multi-year effort involving numerous stakeholders and tight fiscal constraints reflects outstanding patriotism and service to our community. Past veterans from war and peace, as well as future veterans, recognize your service, and we are honored to include you as a friend of the American Legion. (applause). You made it come through, and I'm sure that that memorial will last forever in our hearts, if nothing else. Thank you.
If I could have the Vice Commander come join us as well, and Counsel? Gentlemen, at the ribbon cutting for Oviedo on the Park, we have a certificate for you. We did read it and present it to Colonel Tom Walters, but we really would want to present it to you this evening. And this is our appreciation for all the work that the Legion did in putting this together. It's not easy organizing 1,300 names, checking them, and doing all that work that you have all done to ensure that they belonged on our tribute. This is a City of Oviedo Certificate of Appreciation, and it's presented to the Oviedo American Legion Post for serving on the Veterans Tribute Committee and assisting with the design features and military protocol elements of the Veterans Tribute at Center Lake Park in Oviedo on the Park. They participated in many community events, spreading the word about the tribute, and will play an active role during the official dedication ceremony on Memorial Day, which they most certainly did. Gentlemen, it's our honor from the entire city council, city staff, and every citizen of the city of Oviedo to present you with this certificate. (applause). Moving on to item number two, which is the Distinguished Budget Award. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. For the ninth consecutive year, the city has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Award from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. This was for fiscal year 1314. The award reflects the commitment of the city council and the staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the award, the city has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. Tonight, we're asking the council to formally recognize the budget team, consisting of our Management Services Director, Ms. Robin Hayes, Ms. Gail Bigelow, Ms. Kelly Jones, Ms. Lucy Cole, Ms. Tracy Rodriguez, and Mr. Paul Belden. And we would ask that you recognize them for the receipt of the Distinguished Budget Award from GFOA.
Well, congratulations, everyone. Mr. Cobb, do we have the award?
Yes, sir, we do.
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor. I'd just like to present this to you. It is the Distinguished Budget Award presented to the city of Oviedo, and on behalf of our team, we have a wonderful management services team that consists of many people from the, throughout the city. All the directors participate through a personnel position, and this year, we've extended that to include development services, police services, and fire services. So I look forward to bringing this to you again next year for the 10th, which will be later this year, 14, 15, or really 15, 16. And it's been a pleasure, and I do appreciate it.
Well, Robin, the pleasure is all ours. I mean, the entire team just does an exceptional job, year in and year out. And if the citizens only knew the care that is taken with not only formulating the budgets, but implementing the budgets, watching after the budgets by you and the entire team, they would be quite surprised, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe we can add this with the other nine of them somewhere around the building, or eight of them, right? Congratulations, everybody. Mr. Cobb, do you have any other business for us this evening?
No, sir.
Do you have any ceremonial items?
That's it.
Moving along, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes for the May 18th, 2015 Regular Session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds. Councilman Schenck, anything?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Henkin?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Hearing no objections, the motion on the table is to adopt the minutes as presented for May 18th, 2015. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number four. This is the public comment portion of our meeting. I have no written requests this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address Counsel on any item that's not on the agenda this evening, or even if it is? Come on up. Hearing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to the consent agenda items. Those are Items 5 through 8. What is the pleasure of Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, make motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenck, any questions?
No, just want to say, great that we're getting that Land and Water Conservation Grant. That's phenomenal.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing.
And traffic maintenance.
And what? I'm sorry?
And the traffic signal maintenance and alignment. That'll be wonderful, too.
I saw that. Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Henkin?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, hearing no objections to the consent agenda, the motion on the table is to adopt Item 5 through 8. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to our public hearing, first one is, first and only one, excuse me, is Resolution Number 2990-15. This is amendments to the amended and restated Plan Unit Development, Conceptual Development Plan, Commitments Agreement of the Oviedo Marketplace Development of Regional Impact. Phew, that's a mouthful. Mr. Cobb, enlighten us, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve, to adopt amendments to the conceptual development plan and development agreement for the Oviedo Marketplace, PUD, which is part of the Oviedo Marketplace, DRI. The purpose of the amendments are to reduce the number of parking spaces for Parcel 12, which is the mall parcel, from five spaces per thousand to 4.2 spaces per thousand gross leasable area, excuse me. There was a traffic study that was prepared by a professional consultant that was able to show, demonstrate that this is what the necessary spaces are. It deletes language regarding two of the signs that are currently located. One is located at the intersection of 426 and Mall Boulevard. The other one's located at the intersection of Devera Drive and Red Bud Light Road. It removes those out because we are working with the mall currently on a separate agreement to address those signs. It also places standards in for the western part of Parcel 12. Recently, if you remember, that we did a subdivision to create the western part that's undeveloped as its own tract of land. And so now what we've done is incorporated that into the development agreement and the conceptual development plan. It also modifies the sign plan to account for the signage that is on property, but also to propose a new sign that will bring advertising space to the frontage facing State Route 417. And so there are standards provided for that new sign. The other parts of the amendments are basically what I would call cleanup items. And the city attorney has reviewed the development agreement and has recommended approval. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board have both reviewed the development agreement and the conceptual development plan and recommend approval. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2990-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? Do you have a presentation for us?
Very short one, but...
Name and address for the record when you're ready. That is always good.
My name is Jo Thacker. I'm with Bronn and Cassell, 390 North Orange Avenue, Orlando. In addition to Mr. Cobb's presentation, which we agree with everything that was presented, the reasoning for the new sign on the Bird Island site, the Macy's site, is to try to get more traffic into the mall, and this will give it presence on 417. So it is a, it's a concept to promote economic development within the city and to try to get more traffic into the mall itself. What I have handed out tonight is additional language that has been requested by the master developer, which is Viviera Company, and the overall developer within the DRI. It is, they are minor changes, and they are in blue, so you can see in blue and red. Like on the cover, it says, "Prepared for." And usually, you put the master developer there, but they wanted our name there because this PUD just affects Parcel 12.
Are there, has Mr. Groot had time to see and review this, or is this the first time he's seen?
We sent it on, well, Friday, and they asked us to bring it today.
Okay.
Okay, and so that's what we've done. And I'd like to just go through it very quickly.
Okay, just one more. Mr. Groot, have you had time to see and review this?
I didn't receive anything on Friday. I'm sorry. I don't think Mr. Cobb did either, did you?
I haven't seen it.
I've never seen it.
Is it just page 16?
No.
Seventeen?
It's, and I'll go through it very quickly. On 16, besides the cover...
So these are minor changes?
These are minor changes. What they do is clarify who the responsible party is. Instead, if it's not the master developer, which in this case would be the Oviedo Mall.
Okay.
And so...
So you're gonna go through each and every one of them, so Mr. Groot and Mr. Cobb can follow along?
Yes.
Okay.
On page 16, Item G, it's in reference to the pedestrian crosswalk. And if it's needed, if it's necessary, then the implementation will be paid for by the owner of Parcel 12A, which is the Oviedo Mall. On page 17, well, it's just a change of wording that they requested, that the development shore order management system shall conform. So it's just different wording. And then, the biggest change actually is the definition of the developer. And it shows that Viviera is the overall or master developer, and whoever owns the parcel within the DRI is considered the developer. So we are the developer under this request for the changes to the PUD. And then, on page 22, instead of master developer, it shows overall developer. And then, it also defines Parcel 12A and 12B on page 23. The Viviera Company is required to join in this as well, and that's why on Friday, we were told that they wanted these changes, and I would like to apologize for bringing them to you last minute. If they had been anything that was more than just changing, clarifying responsibilities and not asking for any additional entitlements, I would have asked for a continuance.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions. We have a representative from the mall as well, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Groot?
Yes, sir.
Do you need time to review?
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to skip over, and we'll go to another item and come back to this one?
That'd be good. Thank you.
Alrighty, so what we're gonna do now, folks, since you've presented us with a restated agreement, even though the changes are minor, Mr. Groot does want time to review them, so we are going to put your hearing on hold for a moment. We will take it up, hopefully, this evening, if Mr. Groot agrees with everything. And we're gonna move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is ordinance number 1623. It's a zoning map amendment for Evan Groves, Inc., Clark Street, LLC, and the B.R. Chamberlain Foundation for Public Enrichment, Inc. Mr. Cobb, did you want to read the ordinance by title only, or is Mr. Groot...
I can do it.
You can do that, sir? Okay, thank you.
In order for the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 11.48 acres, locate on the east side of South Lake Jessup Avenue, south side of Clark Street, and north side of Hillcrest Street, from residential R1 to Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing for legislative finding and intent, implementing actions, non-codification severability conflicts, and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend the city's zoning map, official zoning map, to change the zoning district of approximately 11.48 acres. district of approximately 11.48 acres from residential R1 to plan unit development. The subject property is located on the east side of South Lake Jessup Avenue, the south side of Clark Street, and the north side of Hillcrest Street. The, in the city's comprehensive plan, under the low-density residential future land use designation, there are two types of development that are allowed. One is through conventional development, and the other one is through mixed use. Mixed-use development requires the use of a planned unit development. In this request for change of zoning to the planned unit development, there are a couple of things that are being addressed. One that is being addressed is mixed use, in this, in that we have single-family residential, and then we're also memorializing the use of the homestead that is on the property. The proposed conceptual development plan and development agreement provide for a maximum of 34 single-family residential units and also one special use property, which is the Evans Family Homestead. The special use property will be utilized in a fashion that is with the foundation that owns it. The, of the 34 lots, 17 of those lots, which have a minimum lot size of over 8,500 square feet, which is the minimum lot size for the R1 zoning district. The other 17 lots have a minimum lot size less than. One of them is between 8,000 and 8,500. Fifteen of them are between 7,000 and 7,900, and the one I'm in is 6,960 square feet. The conceptual development plan also provides for rear entry into the homes, as well as access points on Lake Jessup Avenue and Clark Street. The, the city attorney has reviewed the development agreement and found it to be, for legal content and found it acceptable. The Development Review Committee considered the PUD zoning map amendment and recommended adoption. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board considered the zoning map amendment and recommended denial of the PUD zoning. The PZA's rationale for the denial was based on the fact that the proposed lot sizes for the PUD are not compatible with lot sizes in the existing adjacent developments and residential lots. It is recommended that the City Council schedule a public hearing for June 15, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing for ordinance number 1623 on June 15, 2015, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a request that we table this first reading to June 15. This, because of certain things that came up with this, there's a lot of people that have sent us emails about it. There are a couple of reasons I'd like to put it off, because I would like to meet with individuals and get a better understanding of what is being planned there. One thing is that 50% of the lots are smaller than the 8,500 square feet lot, minimum lot size, and the fact that PZA denied it. I would like just to have more time to look at this and bring it back on June 15 for the first reading.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All righty. Applicant agree?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Richard German, 1750 West Broadway, Oviedo. We will agree to an extension of time, tabling of the motion for the first reading. Just for your information, we sent out letters to all those who spoke at the PNC meeting, all in opposition, to schedule a meeting with any of them that wished. We've heard from a couple of them, and we're in the process of scheduling that meeting, so hopefully we can have that done before the 15th as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. German?
No.
Okay. Mr. German, I do have a couple of questions. While, while we're going to table this and you're going to go have discussions, I mean, a lot of the emails centered around, at least in my view, three items. And the first item was, everyone is saying R1 lots. Have you studied how many lots there would be if it was R1? It's 34 if it's development agreement.
Yes, we have. It's 27 to meet all the R1 requirements.
So it goes from 34 to 27?
Correct.
As straight R1 zoning. The other issue seems to be parking on the main roads. Because the homes were pushed forward, I mean, it was a valid concern. Was there something you're going to discuss maybe to address that with them?
Well, we, we have, there's four parking spaces under the current site plan, four parking spaces per house, two garage and two driveway, because they're all alley-loaded. We, we talked to staff about placing no parking signs on Hillcrest, which is probably the biggest problem. We also then looked at our, our plan, and if we can expand by changing the parking configuration around the center park in the community from 12 spaces to 18. So yes, we have looked at the parking.
Have you considered just pushing those houses back and creating circular drives up front or something?
We can't do that with the lot configuration with alleys, so we would have to go to a front-load situation.
Okay. So, something that you're going to address. The third issue that seemed to come up as a common theme in the emails that we've received, and I'm assuming they were copied to all of us, some of them were just copied out. Why was the Evans Homes, or the Wheeler Homestead, excuse me, why was that designated as a motel? I mean, I know it's not going to be a motel. My understanding is that it's a, it's a retreat for the seminary, seminarians who come in for RTS.
If, if staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we struggled with some sort of definition of that use. We talked about bread and breakfast, but your code says bed and breakfast, the owner has to live there. Well, obviously, a foundation can't live there. So we had, we needed some sort of use identified with that to come up with our traffic report and traffic counts to then take the, the overall impacts forward as to what our traffic situation was. So it was assigned, or that was called a motel for traffic purposes, but really those are the only purposes that was, was done as a motel.
RTS doesn't intend on using that as a motel.
Absolutely not.
It's going to be the retreat for the seminary, seminarians and visiting priests.
Which is really described that way, I think, in our developer agreement, and we've agreed to say, we can expand that definition and say, you know, here's specifically what uses are, it could be used for and/or restricted, so none of that's a problem.
Well, that's, that helps clarify what I think were some of the salient points that we're in, but I'm glad to hear that meetings will occur, and it's always better if everybody's on the same page. Thanks. Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. German?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to go a little bit further with that motel designation for the house. If, if, I know it's a lack of a term that they were going to use that term, but what happens in the future? Has anybody thought about what happens in the future? Let's say that the people who are, have the foundation now, they're going to use that house for the seminary as a retreat, five years down the road.
May I suggest, that's probably a better question for Dr. Carrera.
Okay.
Why, why don't we do this? Let me just see who Councilman Hankin's question is for. If it's for Mr. German, we'll go to that, then we'll come back to yours. If that's okay.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, I just had a quick one. Dick, when you're, when you're meeting with these folks, I know there were some renderings that were thrown around, something crossed on my desk, and those buildings were very, very nice, in my opinion. I think that would help greatly to show, show them to the folks.
We will have that.
I think, I think when they see what's there, you know, picture's worth a thousand words. I happen to see them, so if you can show them to the folks out there, get, let them get an idea of what you're, what you're thinking. Sometimes they think bad things, and their houses actually don't look bad at all, you know?
We will have them. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. German? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Carrera? Let me turn it back over to Deputy Mayor, so she can finish her thought.
Thank you, Teresa. As I was saying, if it's designated as a motel, but we know what the use is going to be, what happens five years, 10 years from now, when maybe the foundation is dissolved and they sell the house, or they make it into a true motel? How do we stop that from happening?
From being a real motel? Well, that's a good question, because then if the PUD allows a motel, a motel will be allowed, although we'd have, would have to comply with, you know, other standards that will come up at that point. But the best thing, and we have been discussing with the applicant, we use the motel because it was the best use for traffic purposes, but we can define in the, in the development agreement another use for that property, and we'll then make a definition, a specific definition for that property. So we have been discussing with the, with the applicant. The applicant tells us that's not the intent, right? And we came up with the motel just because of the traffic. But we can come up now with a new definition that will be more limiting to what they want to do. And even if we have to define bed and breakfast for the development agreement, what would, you know, anything that would be more...
Or a retreat. Or it's, it's really a retreat of some sorts.
It is. It is a foundation with some sleepover, you know, capacity, something like that. So we would have to come up maybe with another definition for the, for the use.
Right. Well, I just like it to be clarified, and so that it can't ever turn into a regular motel years down the road.
We can come up with the, with the, with a change for the next...
For HOAs, we, we have rules that HOAs have to always do certain things, and, you know, it's a similar type of thing, that they, the foundation would always have to keep it as a bed and breakfast, whatever you want to call it at the time, allowing only multi-night sleepovers of blah, 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 some duration or some other rules that could be put in the PUD, limiting it, something along those lines, right?
But the word motel doesn't...
Right. I know you're using that for traffic capacities. You're using it for traffic, and that's a maximum, which actually is much higher than the usage in reality, so it reflects a much higher traffic usage than ever will really be used by the facility as designated, really.
You know, Teresa, Ms. Mayor, and also, when Mr. German meets with these folks, I think that clarification needs to be made. You hear the word motel, immediately you have this idea in your head, so when you meet them, or when Dick's folks meet with them, you know, explain to them what it's going to be. As the mayor just said, it's a retreat for priest-visiting seminary students. This is not a Motel 6 that they're going to put in a historic part of the, of Oviedo. So they just need to clarify that to the folks, because I agree with the mayor. The emails that I've seen is they're just concerned with a couple of those, and that was one of them, so.
That's something that we can...
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor, do you have any other questions?
No. I, I just wanted to maybe clarify my, another concern that I had as I was looking at the development, and it just, even though it's very nice with their, the drawings and the neighborhood is very, very nice, but I look at it in that area, and it just doesn't seem to fit the character of that area of Oviedo. So I, I just need more time, and maybe the developer can come up with a plan that has bigger lots, something that is more, that fits into that area. I mean, like I said, it was, it's very nice, it would look great downtown, it, but we have, there's a more of a country rural feel over there. And, and I'm not saying that it's a bad plan, I'm just saying I need more time to work out these, talk to more people and work it out.
And, Mr. Mayor, as to the traffic, we have discussed with Chief Chudnow, and he has looked into the area, and he said he would be okay putting a no parking sign at Hillcrest.
I'm just not sure throwing up no parking signs is what I envisioned in that area, but now, now's not the time to debate it. We'll let everybody...
Okay.
Deputy Mayor wants time, and the developer needs time to go out and talk to the residents as requested. That's just my opinion. I mean, we'll see what it looks like when it comes back to us.
Dr. Carrera, what, the R1, what's the maximum lots per, the density?
Oh, the...
R1?
Minimum lot size or density? Density is the...
What's the maximum?
We don't have...
How many lots per, how many lots per...
The density, 3.5.
3.5.
And that is the low-density residential. That's the home plan.
Right.
So the density of the area, they comply with the density.
Right. So that'd be about a third of an acre. 3.5 would be almost a quarter, between a quarter and a, each lot, approximately is a quarter to a third of an acre.
I guess 3.5 on 11 acres, I think is what Dr. Carrera's...
Right.
3-point dwelling units per acre.
That's what I'm saying. It gives you almost 40 lots, 30, you know, you're talking...
If they could develop.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's developable, of course.
If they do, yes.
Design-wise, you know, I, I know with water, et cetera, et cetera. And what would be the, because currently there's a, there's a large park, what would be the, what's the, no, I, I forget if it was in there, the minimum park that they would have to be building currently in there, 11 acres?
I have to check the plans. They are providing more.
Significantly more at this time. Because that was, that was a design many years ago. This design was brought up, I'm going to say, when Wade Trim isn't here. They were, they started talking about designs like this that maximize the open space in order to put, and, and that, and that design maximizes open space and also minimizes road area. That's one thing about that, that design. And I'm not saying it away, just, but, you know, going to a straight zoning, there's people I've called and talked to, and that's, and the words they keep sending is against PUD, PUD, and I'm like, well, PUD is negotiated, there's things that come with the PUD that are negotiated, and can be more, so that's part of the discussion for some of these people. I think we need to understand that, that there's a negotiation with the PUD. But that again, it's three and a half per acre, so they're, they're actually doing that currently. It does meet the future land use currently.
They comply.
I'm not saying, I'd love it, they're going to talk to them and doing other things, but, you know, they are meeting the standards, they're just not meeting every one of them to 100%. And we see that a lot of times, that it's very difficult to meet them 100%, and, but they're meeting them, some of them, and the major ones pretty well. I just want to make sure that we're all...
Yes, Councilman Britton?
Couple of questions for you. Explain to us, zoning professional 101, how you plan to codify the intent of the, the use of the homestead, from a motel use to whatever.
Well, we would have to define, better define in development agreement, right? We can say that for traffic purposes, we will use the same count as motel, but the use that this proposed here, and we will have to come up with, with something that the applicant is comfortable, and we'll define that use in the development agreement.
It seems like that use is very similar to what Canterbury is used for. Is, is there a similarity between that property and, as a retreat or occasionally-used residential or overnight stays?
Is it the, the seminar?
The Canterbury retreat over here on 434. Is that in the...
Actually, they have, they have a hotel back there.
Is that in the city, Brian?
Canterbury? Yes, sir.
How, how do we zone that?
It's on PUD.
That's a PUD?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it probably has similar language?
Actually, that, that PUD is quite old, so it probably does not have similar, similar language. But from your perspective of, would the house operate in a similar fashion, but on a much, much less scale?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Canterbury is a good example to look at, yes, sir.
Okay.
But yeah, it'd be a much, much smaller scale. Canterbury has quite a few rooms, you know?
Yeah.
Obviously, a large meeting area, but, but no, it's, it's a good, good example, though.
I don't have any more questions. Does anyone have any more questions?
Lonny, someone had said that the...
Thank you, Dr. Carrera.
The, that our, because we have in there that bed and breakfast has to have onsite, that there was, that could be...
The proprietor had to stay onsite.
The proprietor had to stay onsite, that they had thought Florida law trumped over that, that didn't require that, that we had that requirement in there, that it, it really was an old requirement that has been over, done with at this point, that can be, so that just may be something that...
I'll look at that.
Something to look at, that possibly, that we have it in ours, that, you know, it's been there so long, but, but it may, we may be able to look at it as a bed and breakfast a lot easier.
I'll check it out. All righty.
I have a question for Lonny, too.
Sure.
Lonny, could you give us some advice? I know the deputy mayor is going to, going to meet with, I assume, residents and then representatives of the applicant. What, what kind of, and, and I think I might want to do the same thing, so... So what kind of advice can you give us on what we should say or how we should conduct ourselves in order to come back here and have this public hearing?
You're disclosing, everybody you spoke with, disclose the subject matter of those discussions in public and make up your mind in this room on the matter based upon the evidence you can, you hear and hear. And if you express an opinion how you're going to vote out beyond this room, you've probably taken yourself out of the picture and you'll have to refuse yourself. That's it in a summary.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
Ms. Mayor, if I could.
Mr. Cobb?
I was crunching some numbers over here to answer one of Mr. Schenk's questions. Per the plan, the recreation space is .88 acres, which is 38,332.8 square feet. Land development code minimum for 35 lots is 12,250 square feet. The land development code minimum for 40 lots is 14,000 square feet.
How about for 27?
27 lots?
Sorry, Brian.
No, that's okay. Not a problem. 9,450 square feet.
A quarter.
So a quarter acre as opposed to almost an acre?
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
All righty. Motion on the table is to continue the first reading to June 15th, which was already announced. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Groot?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. Are you comfortable with item nine or should I continue along a little bit?
You can bring it back if you'd like.
All righty. We'll now go back to item nine. I cut you off mid-sentence earlier. I do apologize.
Joe Thacker for the record.
So you and Mr. Groot have had a little bit of a powwow. How did it work out?
Worked out just fine. He has a suggested change for the definition of developer and the applicant has no problem with the change.
Okay. Mr. Groot, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, if you'd like me to read it and you all have, want to follow along with it?
Sure.
On page 19, the blue language at the bottom. On that page, go to the fourth line. And here's where I'm covered. I struck it out. Can you read under the cover?
Sure.
Oh, there you go. This is challenging for a colorblind person sometimes, so. Strike the words "under" or "as a result of this PUD ordinance" on that page. That's all that will happen on that page.
Okay.
Then on the next page, starting again on the fourth line, after the word "by," comma, "by," add the words "the then property owner of," okay? Strike everything else on that line. And strike the word "to" on the following line. And the words "the applicable parcel" with the letter S in parentheses, okay? And then everything else would be stricken.
Okay.
Ms. Thacker, that's good for you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
That takes care of the goal of the developer and it makes very clear what's going on. It just means whoever the owner of the parcel is at the time of development is subject to the obligations of the agreement. Is that correct, Ms. Thacker?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Groot, when the motion is made, the motion should include the changes as discussed by our city attorney?
As amended.
As amended by our city attorney?
Whoever the.
Mr. Groot?
Sir?
You would like our motion to include the changes as amended by our city attorney?
Please.
In the agreement? Okay.
Mayor, I would also add the changes that were proposed by Ms. Thacker as well. And then, you know, because.
Here's what we're going to do. We're going to make a regular motion. You guys will clarify our motion and then we will agree to it. How about that?
Are you ready?
That way it's done correctly. Leave it up to us. Who knows? You know, we'll rename the thing Florida Mall on you. Who knows? All righty. Anything else from the applicant? Nope. This is a public hearing. As I announced earlier, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on resolution number 2990-15? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Ms. Mayor? Resolution adopt.
A motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt resolution 2990-15 with the changes proposed by Ms. Thacker and as amended by our city attorney.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Groot, does that meet your standard?
Yes, sir. That's perfect.
All righty. Any discussion? Councilman Schenk?
Yes, sir.
Who is my second? Deputy Mayor? Any discussion?
No.
Down to the left.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say that for the first time about signage, I am so happy that I'm getting a sign taller than three feet in the city of Oviedo. And we got this beautiful 50-foot sign out there. Just so you know, I lose every sign vote four to one because I like big signs. That's how you get people in. And I am so thrilled that you guys are getting the first sign. And let me know when the ribbon cutting is in, I'll be there to cut it, so.
He wants to be like the picture, holding underneath, the shopping bags underneath.
Finally got a big sign. For a big mall, gets a big sign, but.
His only disappointment is that it's not spinning and it doesn't have me on it.
Well, that would be good. We'd get more traffic in there. I know. So that's good. Well, happy for you guys. That's a good change.
We like to tease Councilman Hank and I'm not quite sure he'd like Las Vegas, but maybe Reno.
At least for the mall, you know?
All righty. Anything else from anybody on council? All righty. We're all clear on our motion. Mr. Groot, one last time before I call the questions?
That's perfect.
All right. The motion on the table is to adopt with some amendments to it. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Moving along, well, number 11 was pulled. We're up to item number 12. It's resolution number 2981-15, site development order number 441-15. Mr., this goes to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve site development order number 441-15, which approves a preliminary subdivision plan for a 23-lot, single-family residential development located on the west side of Shangri-La Lane, approximately 227 feet north of Artesia Street. The total land area is approximately 9.91 acres. City council considered this resolution at its May 4th, 2015 meeting and continued its consideration to tonight's meeting, directing the applicant to address concerns raised by adjacent property owners and submit a report addressing each concern. The applicant's response letter addressing the concerns is provided in attachment five of your agenda package. My opinion, they have addressed the concerns. With that, council, we would recommend that city council adopt resolution number 2981-15.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, is the applicant present?
William Sullivan, 1350 Orange Avenue, Suite 201, Winter Park, 3279. Just want to thank the city council and the staff and the residents for working with us. And as you might have seen, there was even a nice letter from Mr. Craig. And we have addressed their concerns and we would love for your approval. I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you for working with the surrounding neighbors. They all seem to be very happy now, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Bonus, do you have a copy of that email reference for the public record? You do? Okay. Thank you. I have no request to speak forums. I will open it up quickly, though. Is anybody here to address us on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hank.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2981-15?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Hank?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Schenk?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
No, sir.
Mr. Cobb or Dr. Carrera or Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Evans, whoever wants to answer this question, the changes that were agreed to with the neighbors, are they incorporated into this document somewhere?
Yes, sir, they are.
Mr. Evans, can you come on up and tell me where, please?
Yes, sir. David Evans, Evans Engineering, 719 Herman Avenue, Orlando 32803. Here on behalf of William Sullivan and Potomac Land Development Company. Yes, the 18 conditions based on the letter from the south property owner, Mr. Michael Craig, and the conditions relative to McKinley's Mill were addressed. The letter that came into and was submitted to the city staff included a summary of the conditions and then a explanation of each one of those conditions and how they were met. As well, the PSP was resubmitted to the city before this meeting, incorporating the items that were included on the PSP, which have been shown on the face of the plan as an attachment to your package.
Okay. So on the record, you're telling us right now it's all incorporated in there? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Evans.
I appreciate you guys working with it, too. Thank you.
Made it much easier. Any other discussion from council?
No.
All righty. The motion on the table is to adopt resolution 2981-15. I would just like to add to that motion, if we may, inclusive of all changes discussed with the surrounding property owners as represented by Mr. Evans this evening.
Agreed.
Second or agree? Who is my second? All righty. All those in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All righty. So item 13 is off the table. Mr. Cobb, we're up to reports.
No report, Mayor.
Mr. Cobb, you are the best. He's got a list. Councilman Schenk, your report?
I've got a list.
Oh, you've got a list, too?
I'm just going to say.
All right. I'm going back to Councilman Britton then. Councilman Britton?
Oh, okay. I really don't have much of a list. I just want to say, Lars, that was a very, very emotional, very touching Memorial Day ceremony at both the Lawton House and the veterans' memorial tribute. So thank you for all your efforts and everyone else who worked on that. There'll be a COWNO meeting this Wednesday at Seminole State.
What's the dinner?
I don't know. They usually bring it in their cooking staff.
Well, Seminole State has good dinners.
They do, yeah.
I did have one comment on Oviedo on the park through, addressing trash cans. It seems like folks are throwing their cigarette butts on the rocks and stuff. And the comment I got was there seemed to be a lack of trash cans out there. Is that being worked? Okay. So it's being worked? Expedited, I might add, right? Okay. And the last thing I got is a big shout out to the Oviedo High School baseball team for being state champs. Way to go, boys.
Drew, are we working on getting them down because a lot of seniors are going to be taking off? All righty. Terrific. Anything else?
That's it.
All righty. We're up to myself. I'll be brief and just echo Councilman Britton's comments on all the Memorial Day events. I mean, they were very touching, very well done, and the dedication of our tribute, as was said earlier this evening, will be there for generations to come. And hopefully we have enough room on the wall for all the tributes and hopefully we never have to change the memorial. So with that, I will turn it over to Councilman Schenk.
I echo that. The tribute dedication was wonderful. Barbecue blowout went very well. Also, the Fall of Florida Memorial was very wonderful. I didn't get to go in the morning, but I'd been there earlier. The farmer's market's coming up this Saturday and there's a new knife guy, so get your knife sharpened. I can't wait. And it is great, Drew, seeing, well, you all the time. I see you at the park. The trucks were a huge, wonderful event. It was a great event. Really brought so many people in. I know the gentleman who runs it was just thrilled the whole day. And it's just great, all day long, different times of the day, seeing kids in the splash bed, kids on the park, people in the dog park, all day long. It's just, it's phenomenal to see the use and, you know, hearing from people that this is now their favorite place to come. And it's only going to keep growing. So, great job.
Councilman Hank?
Lots of dreams coming true out there, chief. I mean, this city really just never stops amazing me. I mean, we sit here years ago and we think about that and we've talked about veterans' memorial. I can remember sitting here, all of us, saying, where do we put this thing? You know? And we have the perfect spot and the attendance out there. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just amazing what we do when we all get together. And there's going to be some nice shows out there and lots of good stuff. And we got a good caretaker that lives out there already, keeping an eye on it for us. Councilman Schenk moved in there, so nothing's going to happen to that park, I can assure you. Trust me. The only thing I'm glad is now I got the whole east side to myself. I'm opening gates. It's all great and everything's good, you know? The crash gate, chief? Take care of that tomorrow. We have no more opposition. I'm only kidding. But Lars, great job and congratulations tonight and everybody involved. Good job.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with everyone. The veterans' dedication was a wonderful ceremony, very well done. It was just very moving, very, very nice. So thank you to everyone who participated. Drew, would you like to come up and talk about the first concert that's coming to
Rico.
The first one?
Yeah.
Not the opening?
The first and next one. That's not actually going to be the first one. The first was not going to be.
Oh, okay.
How about the first announced one?
Okay.
First one, Mr. Persnick.
Yes.
That bull and teeth sometimes, isn't it? How about the first one you made a poster for?
We can talk about that one. Yeah, Rico de Monaco Band will be returning for the May, I mean, excuse me, September